Good evening. We'll now reconvene the meeting for the update for the strategic plan. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
I didn't do that the right way, but it's fine. Any discussion or changes to the agenda?
Do we have the things?
No, it's fine. Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Now that we're done with the awkward part, I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Hawkins to lead us through discussion.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to see our whole team is here tonight. Don't they look great over there?
They always look great.
Yeah, and I have to say, I like to look at Elizabeth tonight because we've got our signs from all of our schools up there in the corner, and it looks so nice. So, yeah, you're right in the center of all that. So, welcome to the strategic plan update. We're really excited to share a new format than we did in the past few years. And so, we're trying something new, so be patient with us, and we're going to get through this as easily as we can. So, if you look at on your tables, board members, there is the priority initiative 2024-2025 for the strategic plan. And so, I just want to say before I go any farther, Mike and Tricia, you know, they put all this together. We write down all these little things that we want to have said, and then they put it in a pretty little binder. So, thank you for your work on this. It turned out wonderful. So, if you look at that first page, I just want to really remind us that as we put together the new strategic plan, we really talked about how we wanted to align, right? We wanted to align our work, but we also wanted to be purposeful on how our alignments were intermixed. They were intermixed between our action steps and our pillars. And so, when you look at these priority initiatives, when you look at priority one, you'll see where it hits on the pillars and the different action steps. So, you can see how our work is very intermingled for each of the priorities. As a reminder to the community, we do these report outs in October, February, and in May, and then in August, or in August, we then come up with our new priorities for the next coming school year. So, the other thing that has changed, if you look at the status update, those icons have changed a little bit to the initiative has started. If you look, it's right here on the bottom here, but it's also on the screen. It started, the initiative is on track, it may be on hold, it's completed, it's operational, or it's canceled. And so, some of those terms are carried over from our last plan, but some of those are just new terminologies that our team decided to use with the upcoming plan. So, are there any questions about the status updates or kind of our mission for tonight? The other great thing about tonight is you will not be sitting here listening to me all night. So, each of our teammate, team members are going to be coming up to the table, so the first through, or they're already up here ready to rock and roll, right, for priority number one. But you will be hearing from multiple team members. So, again, if you have questions, we just offer you to answer those questions so we can keep this very conversational. Okay? So, let's start with priority number one. So, in each of our priorities, we have a statement, "We are ready." So, in priority number one, "We are ready to ensure that regular conversations with families about a student's progress towards graduation occur early." Okay? And why we're doing that is because we believe this will drive increased support, early intervention, and encouragement along the path to crossing the graduation stage. So, you can see pillar, or priority number one, strengthen and systematize how the district tracks, monitors, and shares student progress towards graduation. So, you can see on there that we have two priority initiatives under our main priority initiative. And you can see the status, both of those are on track, and you can see where they align with pillars and action steps. Okay? And so, we'll go to 1.1, review and modify parent-teacher conferences to add focus on graduation progress and post-graduation plans. So, I believe this is going to be Mr. Burns.
Do you want to talk about 1.2 as well here before we change the slide, or?
But Mike wants to say something.
I just wanted to note for the board members that what you'll see in the format today is kind of two sections for each one of the priorities, is key actions and then next steps. So, we'll touch on each of those for each one of the five priorities. So, just to give you a little context, and you can see that in the sheet in front of you, but we'll move through that and those two pieces for each one of the five.
So, with rethinking conferences, Lisa and I co-facilitate that committee that is gathered together. We have a number of members on that. There's probably 30 or so members on the committee. You can see kind of the breakdown there of that committee. It also includes community partners. So, we have, we have a number of school officials, but then community partners. If you go to the next slide, Mike. So, what we are really focusing, focusing on is evaluating our current practices. So, looking at what we currently do in elementary, middle, and high school, and making recommendations to increase engagement. And by increasing engagement, what we really mean is improving attendance, getting more parents involved in the conferences. So, we've had two meetings so far, and we have looked at that current state of our conferences. We have reviewed Vertex and career and college readiness offerings. We think that there's a potential connection there. We have established the connection here to the strategic plan and explored the critical questions, things like what do we, or how do we connect families and student goals and learning opportunities and so forth. So, you see those before you. If you go to the next slide in meeting two, we then looked at what's the research say? What's, what's, what are the best practices for conferences? And so, we tried to pull that information out. We reviewed our data over the last five or six years to see where we were at as far as attendance at elementary, middle, and high school levels. And then, we started to develop some action steps to improve and put into action, but we're, we ran out of time, although Lisa has three areas.
So, there are three areas that came up to address in our action planning. One is the content. So, what does the content of a highly engaged parent-teacher conference look like, sound like? The other piece is the structure. Since the pandemic, we have the virtual option. So, we've talked about virtual, and we've talked about in-person, and we talked about the time of day and, and how those are set up. Then, we also talked about the communication around conferences and how we engage our families and our students both in that whole process. So, our action planning will really go around those three key ideas when we're talking about next steps.
Mike, you're right. Next slide. Oh, there you go. The second initiative, priority initiative 1.2, is post-secondary plan, and we have a, a team working on that. David Mohler is our facilitator. You can see that Lori Anderson here with transition facilitator, Jacob Blau, our high school principals, and Vertex coaches are on that committee. And we are looking really to expand or reach all of our students, including those needing accommodations with our ICAP work. ICAP is our career, career and academic planning that we do with our students in grades eight through 12. And we want to make sure that we have a consistent delivery methodology with our students. David Mohler and the Vertex coaches have led some of those lessons, working directly with the students. And one of the things that they found out in doing that is that perhaps the platform that we're using could be enhanced a little bit, could be updated. So, there, the next step for us in this is really to look at what, is there an alternative solution that might be better and might be more engaging for the students to look at? We're also looking at ensuring the impact that elementary schools can have with short-term and long-term planning and our outcomes with this.
What does that mean, Mark? The last thing you just said.
With the short-term and long-term? So, what is, we don't know yet because we're still in the process of this, but what is it that elementary schools can do to support students in their career planning, both in a short term and then in a long range? For example, in eighth grade, our students do start a four-year plan that we look at in nine, 10, 11, and 12th grade. Is there something that we could do a little bit more long-range in third, fourth, fifth grade, have them come back and visit that so that it's something that they've thought about previously and maybe worked through?
So, you're looking at possible ways to involve elementary students?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, they've talked a little bit of this in our, in our meetings, just about can we do some career days and career, you know, things that people have parents or somebody come in and say, hey, this is what I do for a living, and you could do this too. So, that was just a suggestion that was brought up in the meetings.
I, I think one of the things is we know some schools do like a career cafe. However, we want all schools. So, we're trying to also talk about that consistency piece and the exposure of what we do for kids early on to pique their interest and realize all the different possibilities. Oftentimes, when you see like kindergartners, they'll talk about being a firefighter or a doctor, and there's more out there in the world that we don't even know quite yet. So, just giving them the idea and planting the seeds. So, what does that look like in the short term for them, but also thinking down the road? And looking at, it kind of, it ties nicely into rethinking conferences because in that piece, we're talking about, when I mentioned earlier, when we talk about the content of conferences, what does that look like for success down the road? What does that mean? We look at the attendance in school. We talk about their performance in the academic areas, but what other layers go into that conversation that are indicators of future success? So, our additional meetings for rethinking conferences are November 7th and December 10th, and we will continue to work on that action planning and the development of the recommendations. And again, that, I'm wearing my elementary hat here, we're thinking about, you know, really, the second they set foot in pre-K, we're talking about, we want them to successfully graduate from our schools. So, this is not just a, a secondary piece. It's all of us working together for that. So, there will be some recommendations that impact PK through 12. And then, the timeline is that in March, these recommendations will come forward for implementation the following school year, '25, '26.
And then, with the post-secondary readiness plan, we have, and you have seen the dashboard, we're looking at enhancing that and building that out even more. One of the things that we're interested in potentially doing is giving teachers access to that so that then they can have conversations with their students about where they're at as far as their graduation readiness or career readiness, and talk about their, their career interests. So, because it pulls all that information together. And then, there you see again that we're exploring possible alternatives to the current career exploration platform. And as Lisa said, I think I'd just leave you with, with, with one and two here, the thing, the idea that how do these two priority initiatives connect together? How can we use conferences perhaps to do a better job of communicating with our families about students' post-secondary readiness and their career interests?
I, I just have a comment. I, I like where you're going with this, and it just put a light bulb in my head, like, students are always thinking, okay, I got to graduate. They're not thinking, you know, now we're trying to get them to think, not only getting through school, but why are we going through school? Where do we want to get to when we're done? And don't start thinking about that just when you're a junior and senior, because they're going to change their mind 10 times. But it's okay to have when they're a third grader, well, I want to be a nurse. Well, then, they'll think about that for a couple of years, and then when they're in middle school, they might think of something else. But now, they're knowing, this is the reason I'm going to school. It's more than just getting a grade or going to school because everyone says I have to. I, I like that. It gets their mind thinking very young that there's a purpose for school. That's just, I like it.
I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions about priority number one? So, if you look on this sheet for priority number one, there's also just summaries of some of the things that, that they shared with you today, but really, the, the content comes from the slide. So, this is just for you to take home, and then you can say, oh, remember what we talked about? We wanted to put that on there as a summary. Okay? So, we'll turn to priority number two. If that's okay? And you three are staying, staying here, is that correct? Okay. You're back on, back on track. So, priority number two, "We are ready. We are ready to bolster our instructional practices by using data and best practices to engage students in learning. And we believe that doing so will drive each student's academic progress forward by tailoring support for their individual needs." So, those were, that is the priority for number two. And then, the priority initiative is enhance instructional practices through dedicated focus on student growth and progression towards grade level standards. All right? So, number 2.1 is explore the use of standards-based grading at the middle school level, which that is as started. 2.2, lead dedicated professional learning for teachers on how to review and use student growth data to inform instructional practices. That is on track. And 2.3, optimize collaborative learning community process to ensure consistent implementation and alignment with strategic plan goals. And that also is, is listed as on track. And then, you can see the two pillars that it crosses with and the two action steps it crosses with. So, then...
So, standards-based grading, just to give you all a definition, it is evaluating student progress based on the mastery of learning of standards or learning objectives. So, instead of an A, B, C, average grade or a percentage grade, it is about each and every individual learning standard. And we would set essential standards that we would then give students feedback on through a format like we do in our elementary schools, perhaps a met and a not-yet met. So, we are studying that right now with our middle school guiding coalition, looking at that with just sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And the conversations really revolve around the research, what, what is the best, the research that's out there? For those of you who don't know, UNI is a hotbed for this. Matt Townsley, one of the lead professors there, has written multiple articles and books about standards-based grading. So, we have somebody local essentially that we could rely on. And then, the shifts, the thinking shifts for teachers. And so, after two meetings, that's kind of where we are. And then, I'll talk about the next steps, I guess, next, so.
Mark, can you do me a favor? Can you just let them know what guiding coalition?
Okay, so, our middle school guiding coalition is made up of our educational support teams, so our secondary educational support team members. So, that would be the math and science and social studies curricular people and so on. And then, our instructional coaches at the middle school level. And our principals also come to those meetings.
Thanks.
So, that's our group.
For 2.2, we have lead dedicated professional learning in the area of our diagnostic. So, we use iReady for our diagnostic, and we use that K8. So, we started the year strong this year with, since we are going to be using our growth as one of our indicators this year to report back to you, we are going, we started strong with some professional learning. So, all of our K8 teachers had an initial kind of smattering of some PD to get in and look at reports and how to run those reports and how to interpret those reports. In September, I went to all three middle schools and did a delivery of PD that ran around the diagnostic as well, pulling the reports, again, looking at it, and then what is their response? So, what are they going to do with that information? How are they going to respond to students? At Washington, for instance, they're taking an action step where every student is meeting every day during advisory time. And so, we worked specifically with those teachers who are not ELA teachers and not math teachers on how they could support and get into the system, the platform, and run their own di, or their own reports to see how students are doing. Even though they're not their students across the day in a content area, they are their students because they're, they're all everybody's students. In, on October 11th, then, our first professional development day in the district, after school was underway, we held sessions for all elementary and middle school staff. And elementary teachers and middle school teachers were allowed to choose from a variety of sessions that were offered. So, kind of a, here are the sessions we're offering, and you can come and feed your own need. What do you need? What is your next step in this journey of learning about student growth and how we can take action to work towards that? And actually, tomorrow, I am taking a group of two principals, five coaches, all variety of middle school, elementary, and then four EST members, and we're going to Cedar Rapids for an iReady Leadership Academy as a next step on how, as leaders in the district, we all can work on this and pull our student growth data, interpret, and then what are our next steps as a district?
For priority initiative 2.3, this is really focusing on the CLCs, the collaborative learning communities. And one of the things that we have worked through is the PLC Coaching Academy that's presented by Solution Tree. So, it's pretty exciting that we were a host site. We had our first sessions October 15th and 16th, and this included executive directors, elementary and secondary principals, our coaches, and our educational support team leaders. And it really is hitting the reset button on some of those fundamental beliefs about the collaborative learning communities and how we can enhance them and move that forward to impact student learning. It's also talking about how we can build that capacity. So, it's not just, I always say, like, leaders should be able to walk away and the work should continue because it's going to be so ingrained and so embedded in such capacity and operationalized that it will be seamless. And so, that is our purpose in having more training around it. So, this really aligns, when we talk about the optimal learning environment, all three domains of that optimal learning environment, when we talk about having an intellectual and safe environment, CLCs promote that because of the collaboration that goes on and the conversations around what happens in the learning environment. Same thing with standards alignment and culturally responsive curriculum. And instructional practices is another domain in optimal learning environment. And so, when teams are meeting in their CLCs, they are talking about, how do I best instruct? What, what is the standard? What does this mean? How are we breaking this down for students? So, it totally aligns with that. And also, when we do that, we're also meeting the diverse student needs, which is domain three. And so, we're always looking at their data. Those conversations are centered around data, comparison data, and making adjustments and instruction through MTSS to meet student needs. So, this weaves everything together so nicely. And I think that's the biggest thing that we really want to communicate. This is not something brand new that we're asking people to do. PLCs is longstanding research. I mean, it's been around for a long time, and we know it impacts student learning positively. And so, this is not, this is a way of doing things, and we're working to enhance that and weave it into the work we've done with behavior solutions, the work we're doing with optimal learning environment. You hear a lot about state standards and how some of those have been refined and changed. This gives us ample opportunity for teachers to have conversations around those standards so that they are meeting those standards and lifting students into them for success. The content, so they talked a lot about the key components. I think that the focus is on learning. So, oftentimes, they'll say, what do you teach? Really, we, the answer, I hope, is teaching students, no matter what content I teach. Because students and the focus that all students can learn, that philosophical belief that when they walk in the door, we're going to take them great places. And so, that's one of the key components of a PLC, also collaborative teams. And that's that CLC work. That's working together and talking about what is the standard telling us? It's working on the four questions which are mentioned below, and then results orientated. If we are not looking at data, we are not completing the work. We are not doing the full cycle because the data is telling us how we can best meet student needs, what our instructional practice should be, and how we're going to respond in MTSS. So, you have the four questions up there. What do we want students to know? That's when we take the standard and we deconstruct it. And what I mean by that is we want to say, okay, here's the standard. What should Katie know and understand and do to be successful? We want that for all kids. Okay? So, that's the first rung of that. Then, how will we know? That's our common formative assessments. That's looking at our universal screeners. That's looking at summative assessments. What will we do if they don't? We differentiate, and we scaffold up into the standard and give them support. And what will we do if they already know it? We're going to differentiate again. So, that whole idea of differentiation to meet student needs. But then, if we're still having some response within that, we know some students need interventions. That's that MTSS structure of tier two and tier three. And extensions. We have kids that are advanced learners that need that challenge to respond to those standards that we're presenting. So, really, right now, this is giving us some tools to embed our work in our schools and also to evaluate where we're at. Because we're all in a little bit different place, and that's okay. It's all about that continuous improvement to move the work forward. So, that is standard, or priority initiative 2.3.
I got a question. I'm not sure if you used the word Katie a second ago, but I'm going to use that analogy with my question. So, if we have a group of Kates within our system that are not meeting the standard, and the data is showing us that, you are saying we are able to acknowledge that, see that, and as an organization, come together, develop solutions to specifically help the Kates within our system, correct?
Right. Sorry that I picked on Katie.
So, equity is being infused in our process? And can you elaborate a little more how you are educating the teachers to say, hey, we have to do something differently and not saying, oh, Katie's is the problem?
Yes. I'm glad you brought that up. So, it is that fundamental belief that all students can learn. It's not, it's not the student's problem. It's a, a group effort collaboratively to think about how we can best respond. So, when we're looking at data, say, for example, 60% of the class is not getting it. That tells us we need to reteach the whole class. All right? So, we're, it's that assessment along the way that tells us, okay, how do I re-instruct, reteach, or what other instructional practices do I need to, to use to meet their needs? So, it is equity across the board. This is how we ensure that every student gets an equitable in access to the curriculum that they need because it's that ongoing assessment piece. And remember, I said earlier, if we don't have data and results, then we can't complete the cycle. We have to know where students are at in order to bring them into the standard or extend their learning. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was, I was curious too, specifically, and I don't need, probably get into the weeds. We're doing a parking lot, but what are we specifically doing to help teachers to not only see that, but give them the tools to educate the Kates again?
Right. Yes. So, when I talked about building capacity, because we have our instructional coaches and our building leader, our building leaders at the table and our educational support team leaders, they are going back into the building, and one of the next steps from this plan is they actually have some homework that they have to do to assess where they're at and develop action steps for their next step to bring their staff into that learning. So, it's really taking a look at where each team is at because every team within a building is in a little bit different place too, and how to support them and coach them into those cycles. So, coaches meet with them once a month for MTSS. CLCs are gathering once, once a week and talking about these things. And oftentimes, the building leadership, we also have building leadership teams, they're in, in on this process and supporting it. And so, they may be in that CLC con- And so they may be in that CLC conversation. Also, at the elementary level, and also in many secondary levels, we've designated like a Friday where they have a large chunk of time where they're doing that deep dive in that work. And so with their homework that they have from Solution Tree being here, they are sprinkling in that learning and infusing it and connecting it. So the expectation is, oh, guy, it's not, hey, we're going to talk about how we're going to do CLCs. It's, hey, we've been working in MTSS. Here's another layer that we need to consider and add. So the long, the short answer to my long explanation is they're going to evaluate where they're at and have a specific action step to move the teams along in that process.
Your question gets, oh, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
Your question gets to the very heart of the complexity of being a teacher. How can I know my, each of my students and their different learning and strengths and weaknesses and needs so that I, the teacher, can help them from there to mastery of whatever the learning is expected to be? You've captured it beautifully. That's, that's it. That's tough work. But the kind of professional learning that you're talking, that you provide, you all provide, and the kind of things that are in place, like instructional coaches, principals who are trained in all of that, the PLCs or CLCs, where teachers come together to talk with each other and to say, I'm not making it with this kid. You know, I know, here's where we are, here's where we have to get to. Help me think that through. I mean, it's so many of those building blocks that get to the very, that's the heart of it, right there. Capture it.
And I think, too, you know, we've worked really hard, and Julie talked about it a little bit, just teaching, making sure that people know how to look at data and then make a decision about that and see what, if I look at each kid individually, what do they need from me? And be able to look at that and know that this isn't anybody's fault, you know? This is just really, what, what pieces are we missing? And how can we go back and reteach that so that then, you know, the understanding's there? And I think we've done a really good job of training, you know, teachers, or not even training, but giving them the time to look at data, to say, okay, let's be realistic. And what is this saying? And what it says, then what does that mean we need to do?
Yeah, I think that's amazing, because I remember Tammy Ryan sat here a few years ago and said, this is what the community wants to know. They want to know, are we helping the kids, are we helping kids to read with their math, financial literacy, have a career? And that is continuing to happen. And so it's exciting that the community gets to hear that. And I think, you know, later on in one of our subcommittees, it would be interesting to see where we're at with some of that data. So that way, we can talk and figure out what can we do collectively. But it's amazing to continue to hear the different strategies to help all of our kids become successful in a variety of different ways.
So next steps. Middle school standards-based grading. Our next step really is a gap analysis. We're looking at what is it our teachers know and understand about? Standards-based grading, assessment, current grading philosophies, all of that. What training do they need as we consider a shift to arguably a more detailed way of communicating about learning?
Anderson, you teed up my next steps perfectly, so thank you. So just a little tiny history, this is our third year district-wide with Eye Ready and the Diagnostic Screener. So the first year, really, the goal was when you implement something like that so large, large scale, the first year was get students on, get teachers on, learn the dashboard and just get them on. The second year, it was learn one report. We actually asked them to look at the diagnostic report, of course, but learn one report and look at the student's pathway that is generated from that diagnostic. And this year, we're asking them to look as building leadership teams now at your building data and how can we make improvements? And that is where the, that's where it's going to happen, right? When you start to look at that. So our next steps, we're working with principal-coach teams in their building leadership teams. So as I mentioned, tomorrow, we're taking a small group of people from this district to a leadership academy where we're going to start that work, where they're going to come back then, and we're going to work with other peers, principals, coach teams, to work on their building data and what that looks like. And on February 14th, we again will have additional Eye Ready sessions that will come from the work that we finish here in November, December, January, on what was reported back from tomorrow. So it's a continuous cycle, just kind of like Lisa talked about, of what we need, what we're seeing, and then expanding that to the buildings for student growth and use in Eye Ready. Eye Ready also is rich in resources. So like, Anderson, when you ask that, we also are teaching them how to find the resources to meet the needs that they see with the data that they're looking at.
And I think one last piece of that, if I can just add, is we're working really hard to create a culture that people can look at data with other staff members and be honest about that and be okay with it. Because, you know, there was a time when people were nervous about, oh, if my classroom doesn't succeed at this rate or what this looks like, that really, you know, people don't really, they want to pretend that doesn't happen. And I think we've really created a culture where you work with this PLC, let's look at the data as truthful as it is, and then let's figure out a way that we can help support students to, you know, improve their achievement levels.
Yeah, I think that's important. I don't want to overtalk. But also, back to the Teacher and Parents Conference, there's a story behind this. Because the data will say one thing, and we have to be careful not to just look at numbers. There's a story that goes with every child and every parent that we can put together for the strategy. And so, again, this is super exciting to hear, because I love data, so.
Our next step for CLCs to optimize that is we will continue, the PLC Coaching Academies will have them in November and January, so there will be four more sessions. I think another key point is that building leadership teams and guiding coalitions will continue to embed that work. So when you talk about next steps and how we're sprinkling that in for teachers to enhance their practice. Also, Mark and I, who work closely together, when we're having a principal meeting coming up, what does that look like for our principals? And what questions are we asking them? And how we're supporting them as they continue the work in each of their buildings?
Any questions on priority number two?
Question, I don't know what the question is, but it has to do with special education. How are we bringing, are special ed teachers involved in each and all of the things today that you're doing for gen ed teachers? So, oh, Brenda, hi, didn't see you back there.
Mine up, Brenda.
Well, Nancy, thanks for not forgetting about me. I'm actually really happy to say yes to all of the above. We have been working probably more in a line than ever before to make sure that we are lockstep. And we always say rowing the boat in the same direction. So our IDEA/DA plan, so that's our, we were cited, I've talked with you a little bit about that plan, is all around transition. So everything that that team is doing to make sure that we are fulfilling what we said we were going to do in our plan is in lockstep with Mark's team in transition. We're working really closely together and making sure that we are living true to our word of all means all. So it's really exciting. We have, you know, I was involved in the PLC work. We have, we've sent a number of teams to the special ed component of that, and we'll send more this summer in addition to attending the, along with the general ed peers, to make sure that we are all speaking the same language. So it's really exciting.
Is it safe to say, just for the general public's understanding, that special ed teachers receive all of the professional learning that all the general education teachers receive plus additional things because they have some unique circumstances to deal?
We are making really individual decisions with the professional learning. So we are making sure that, like, for example, at elementary, when Lisa's planning, she's planning, I am there, along with Angie Breitbach from my special ed team, to make sure that we are considering all needs. So when appropriate, the special education teachers are going. We're being intentional about what their role is in that training and what they need to take. And then we're also specializing some of the information for their particular roles. So I would say, whether it's in symposium, we did have some state mandated training that we have to do because of our designation in the world of transition. It's all good stuff. But we weren't, like this last professional learning day at the secondary, we weren't able to partake in the, like, the free choice that we have been in the past. But whenever possible, we're really trying to be intentional about that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a hockey game, we're changing lines.
Don't get in a fight.
So we're going to move on to priority number three. And what number three talks about is how we're ready to minimize distraction and barriers at school. So pardon me, wish Jim Prosko is still sitting at the table right now. And then why we're doing this is we believe that when students are consistently at school, they really do engage in their own learning. And so those are important pieces for us. The priority for number three is to enhance fundamental structures in place to reduce barriers to learning. So 3.1 is about behavior solutions training. 3.2 is about best attendance practices and taking into account the new state law that continues to change on us, week after week, it seems like. And then 3.3 is to establish a district advisory group to really talk about that cell phone issue at our schools. Okay? So we have Becky, Mimi, and Colby here to share some of their work. So the mic is yours.
Thanks, I'll start. In the spring of 2024, Mark and Lisa had brought Behavior Solutions in for their teams. It was really great to leverage the success of what was going on in other areas of RTI at work or MTSS to get people kind of rallied around behavior, knowing that everyone has a part in behavior. It's not just the AP and the office, that every teacher has a part in behavior. So that leadership training happened last spring, and this fall, all staff was able to participate in a day on, with Behavior Solutions, which is focusing on the MTSS process with behavior and what their role will be in that. And after that training, we had an entire day focused on topics, choice sessions that would be related to that, mostly universal tier things surrounding behavior. Throughout this fall, many of the strategies from the Behavior Solutions training are being implemented. These are many times not new strategies. These are research evidence-based strategies that we've used for many years. The Behavior Solutions training really made this very intentional, bringing people back to the RTI and the MTSS process. It also helped people focus on what is going to be our collective response when students are not behaving as expected. One thing that we're doing that's super exciting, and maybe you want to come down and visit us, on the 31st, we're having a support staff symposium to provide some universal tier supports for all of our support staff. So transportation will attend, food service will attend, and our paraprofessionals will So this is a really exciting graphic. Last year, five paraprofessionals from our district, we wrote a grant, and they were able to attend a fellowship at the Scanlon Center at the University of Iowa. Part of that fellowship allowed them to travel to Des Moines and receive some additional training, and they did some modules back at home. One of the things that happened was they kind of earned some money for the district that we could have some additional paraprofessional training. So when I talked to them about, what did you guys think? What would you want to do with this money? One of their dreams was to have Dr. Jacob Priest from the Scanlon Center come and speak to all of our support staff. So their dream became a reality, and that's what we're doing at the Support Staff Symposium. They will introduce him, and he will speak as a keynote, and then he will do a follow-up with each one of those groups. So the transportation group, the food service group, and then a couple groups of paraprofessionals will come through. When they're not in a session with Dr. Jacob Priest, you can see, these are some of the choice sessions that will be offered. Thank goodness EST and a lot of other people mentors have all stepped up to conduct these sessions. So we'll all be working hard on Thursday, conducting these sessions with our folks down there.
Tammy, dear, what's the title of your session, please?
Building relationships with students and having fun.
Okay, thank you. I just thought, having fun with students or building.
We. Staked with fun in the title.
Yeah, we did allow people to, to register on titles that they thought they were most connected to, and we did determine that if you write having fun in your title, it will become very popular.
Mental note. It's very exciting to have that learning opportunity for our support staff. I mean, those, those topics are wonderful, and to honor their contribution by having this kind of a learning conference, basically, is wonderful.
Yeah, so if you'd like to attend, it's going to be at the Grand River Center. We're going to register at about 7:30, and then the keynote starts at 8:00. But any time during the day, if you'd like to pop in. Wanted to share with you a little bit of snapshot of our first 40 days of school. This has been a journey. Look at us in 1920. This is a number of referrals in the first 40 days, and roles are assigned at Infinite Campus. So there's a role called offender. It sounds kind of harsh, but that's the role in Infinite Campus. That's what it's called. You could be an offender, or a witness, or a participant of a behavioral incident. So these are incidents where we've had a clear offender. So sometimes we document things with a couple participants. We don't have that included in here. That's just good documentation for us to know. These are where there has been an offender. So you can see, we did, after COVID, have a couple of years of increasing behavior referrals, and this year's first 40 days have started to come back down a little bit. I would say elementary has not come down as dramatically as the others. And Lisa and I have discussed this, there has been quite a bit of attention given to documentation in elementary. We are documenting more than we ever have been. Over the past five years, elementary has gone from, they were writing on paper referrals and handing them in in duplicate, and then someone else was entering those. So they have kind of made things more efficient. Sometimes when you make things more efficient, you're more apt to do that documentation. So we're thinking that's about, a little bit about the increase there in elementary. Go to Becky.
Can I see 3.2? I don't have. And 3.2 is align attendance practices with new state laws while taking a proactive student and family-centered approach to address chronic absenteeism. We continue to follow attendance procedures, break down barriers to daily attendance, and increase family engagement. Many schools are implementing positive student attendance initiatives. This is an example of what Lincoln Elementary School is doing. They are awarding a PA for positive attendance for any time the student is present on time or excused. When the student gets 10, then they get to draw out of their prize bin for a prize that they would like. In addition to that, they are also doing class attendance. So for every time that their class is present on time or excused, they get, when they get to 10, they get an additional recess. The students are very excited about this. This is one positive thing that has come out of all of the attendance work, that we are trying to get students really engaged and excited about everything it means to come to school. In addition to that, on December 5th, we will hold our multicultural family engagement night at senior high school. This will highlight topics on the importance of attendance, as well as tie in our career and college readiness and VERTEX initiatives, and explaining all of those things to our multicultural families, grades eight through 12.
Good evening, board members. So as you can imagine, 3.3 is establishing the district advisory committee, our group to explore research and best practices around student cell phone use in school. As you're all aware, this is a topic that is at the national, state, and local level across our country, and it's being examined, reviewed, discussed, and we, as a school district, are no different. We need to be looking into this matter as well, too. So. So what we ended up doing is establishing a group, an advisory group, to explore research and best practices around student cellphone use in schools. As you can see, the membership includes myself and Mark Burns, who is the co-facilitator of that group, our superintendent, I shouldn't say our superintendent, our superintendent.
Just pick one, just random.
One of our board members, Ms. Whitman is on the board, are on the group as well, five school administrators, a counselor, three secondary teachers, two high school students, and three parents in our district. And while that group is small, that group is small by, and we're doing that intentionally because this is such a matter that we want to be agile and nimble enough to be able to do this work, to bring recommendations together, and have these diverse discussions about this very topic. So on October 2nd of this year, we had our first meeting, and what we did is review the purpose of why we put this group together, and what the work of this advisory group is going to consist of. We also talked about the current practices in our school system, and some of the administrative guidelines, and it was very timely because yesterday in the Telegraph Herald, there was a whole article about this happening in the tri-state area as well, too. So.
Good play, good play.
And then the last piece of that, though, is we really focused on the current challenges with this matter, because it's easy to talk about whatever we're going to do, but how are we going to implement that? How would that be enforced if whatever recommendation we brought forward? So Mike, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide? So this was just a snapshot of some information that we shared, and according to the National Center for Education Statistics, about 76% of schools prohibit non-academic use of cellphones or smartphones during the school day. The Pew Research reported that 72% of US high school teachers say cellphone distractions is a major problem. But the challenge is, is how do we enforce it? Newsweek shows a map, if you look at that, and I think it might, this might be a little bit dated because I think it's now up to 15. And again, I go back to this as a national discussion, because as you can see, those states in yellow already have policies or laws on the books that basically have addressed this topic in their state. And Iowa is no different. Last legislative session, there was a discussion, there was a Senate file, I think it was 2044 that was brought forth to talk about this topic. As this topic continues to gain traction, and that landscape continues to change, more and more people are going to start advocating for what schools are going to do about this. I would not be surprised if this legislative session, this comes back up again. So that was, that was one of, those are some of the challenges that we faced. Then even more importantly, the other challenge that we have to talk about, and this is recently conducted by the Pew Research Center, is while a lot of individuals support a, I don't like the word ban, but prohibiting the use of cellphones because they believe it would cause fewer distractions in class, they also say, though, too, that parents want to be able to reach their kids. And that's something that we have to contend with as well, whatever we decide to do as a, as a school system. So our goal as a group is, is to bring forward some recommendations to the administration, and ultimately the school board, to figure out what our district should do to implement for the 2420, or excuse me, 2526 school year. And this is not just a middle school, high school issue, this is an elementary issue as well, too. Not only is it talking about cellphones, but it's also talking about these items as well, too. And then I think the other piece that we have to factor in is not only is it, the cellphone is the vehicle and the medium for that, but it's also the social media that is impacting this as well, too. And so really, while we, while we're focusing on cellphones, this is really a brain health, mental health issue as well, too. Probably one of the most important things for our kids of our time right now. We have one high school that did a book study with their guiding coalition of the Anxious Generation, the book by the, the social psychologist Jonathan Haidt. And that's one of the, one of the takeaways of his, his book, and also his findings is, is that we are having, this has brought forth a different challenge for our youth, and also how we, how we are going to protect them. And one of the biggest things that I take away from that is that we are more concerned about where children are going physically than what they are doing online. And there's not as much guidance as what's being done online, as if, you know, hey, you can't go to the store, or you can't go to the mall. Who are you going to the mall with? Who's, what friends are going to go with you? But you know what? Go ahead and get on this, and you can go into whatever route you want to go. And so that's one of the things that we decided that we have to look at, not only our work is going to involve looking at our current policies. How would, how would this impact our policies? Two that come to the top of mind is 5200, which is student conduct, and 5504 is student responsible use of technology. We also want to, like I said, I go, go back to the survey, or the, the group, that group is small, but we need to survey not only our students and our faculty, but also our families. We need to get buy-in from the community and understand what our temperature is and appetite as a community, if this is something that, whatever we should do, that we would be able to implement and enforce. We also want to look at other district policies that, and practices that have been put forth. As I said, this is a topic that's happening at the state level. Other urban education network districts, other districts smaller than us, districts a little bit larger than us, have all been talking about this and have addressed some of this already, or are in the same process that we're, that we're looking at as well. And then the last piece that we have, we also have to talk about is staff impact and expectations. If we're going to expect this of our kids, what do we expect of our adults as well, too? Because not only do you go out into a restaurant and you see all the kids on cellphones, you also see adults as well, too. So that's some of the work that we've done so far.
I know we just got started on the committee, but what I found interesting, based on the articles that I read in the newspaper and our committee, is some of these students are kind of accepting this, and they know that if their cellphone is not distracting them during class time, they're thinking, well, that's okay, I'm going to do better in my classwork, I'm going to get more out of teacher-student time. And I think the kids are getting acceptance, they're coming to that realization, and if these rules are put in place, I think they're going to be okay, because they know that they have to change up something to get more from school. So thank you for starting this, and I'm anxious to see what the outcome is and the rules we put in place.
Becky, quick question. For attendance, you talked about what's happening at the elementary level. You gave an example to reward good behavior. Is there anything being done at the middle and high school to incentivize kids coming to school?
We're really focused on the positive aspect of building the relationships with students and encouraging them to come and be involved in extracurricular activities. I would have to do some further investigating to see if we had any other positive reinforcements similar to this, but the main focus has been on really connecting with families. I know our middle school and our high schools are making more phone calls, more interactions with families to start building those relationships on a level that we probably haven't had in the past. And that's really what is most valuable and important.
With elementary, they all want to go to school. They love going to school. That's, you know, my kids were like that most of the time.
Not all of them want to.
You know, lots of times it's a barrier with the family unit where they live. So they want to come to school, but for some reason, their family is keeping them at home. So are you hearing, you know, if they don't show up, is there some excuses that, well, mom or dad or my grandma said I had to stay home? You know, how are we dealing with that when those words come out of their mouth?
And that's where those strong relationships that we have with families, because we do know that there are bigger systemic issues within families. There are mental health issues with families, and they can't get themselves to do something, let alone get their child to school. So in, in the bigger picture of that, offering more supports to them, when we know the barriers that exist, then we can offer the supports that need to be put in place to help, to help the entire unit be better, right? And so that is really, really the push that we've been taking, is we are reaching out to them on a positive level. Yes, there's a punitive piece to this as well, but really trying to get that trust and that relationship built. Tell us, what is going on that your child isn't coming to school? Because it really is pre-K through 12. So we have to get in there and really support them in whatever ways they need. And this, this really is like an everybody community issue to bring these pieces all together and combat this chronic absenteeism.
Superintendent Hawkins, you commented in introducing this priority three about the changing landscape of this new state legislation on absenteeism. Can you comment on that at all? I get, as I'm out in the community, one, it's one of the most frequent topics that I hear. You know, my grandson was, had surgery and was marked unexcused absence, and that's the new legislation. Can you say anything?
Well, I think when the new legislation came out initially, it was interpreted pretty directly as far as if you, an absence is an absence, and if you're not in school, you know, it's an absence, and there's really not going to be too many excuses for you to not be in school.
And that was the new legislation?
Yes, and I think that the reality of all this is, no matter what the law says or what our rules have in place, we do think it's important for kids to be in school. I mean, our number one priority is to say, how can we reduce barriers? How can we build relationships? And how do we get, get students into school? We also know that there are some things that happen because things happen in life, right? We have to attend funerals, we need to go on college visits, we're sometimes going to get the flu, you know? And so there was some new guidance that was issued this last week from the Department of Education, which we are going to get out to our families to know that there's going to be some different ways that we're interpreting. You know, if somebody is really ill, and a school says, you need to go home sick, well, that's our permission to say, it's excused, you're sick, you need to stay home, you know? Just that goes into play with our, you know, don't have a fever for 24 hours and those types of things. The new legislation states that, or not, the new guidance states that college visit is excused absent, and we mark those kids present, because we want students to go out and go on college visits so they can see what's next for them. And so new guidance will be coming out from us here in the district, and then, but still we'll be working with families to say, if there are barriers, what are those, and how can we help lift those to get students into classes? Yeah. And to go back and just answer one of Anderson's questions, I really do think it also goes back to culture, you know, because we've really worked, I know, in our secondary schools about being in the hallways, being present, welcoming kids into our classrooms. Wanting them to be in school is a big part of that piece as well. And not that we haven't done that in the past, but I think we've done some things this year to be more intentional about that piece, to really build that relationship and have students have that feeling where I want to go to school. You know, one thing we did, Joe and Colby worked with esports, because we heard from students that one of the barriers was, hey, we like to play video games, you know? And so Joe's been doing esports meetings at all the high schools and alternative learning, and I think he's had 20-plus kids at each of those meetings. If that's something that motivates 60 kids in our district to come to school, then we're doing the right things. So.
Are we on to next steps?
Yeah.
We kind of talked a little bit about this, oops, sorry. Collaborating with guiding coalition, coalitions and building leadership teams to strengthen their MTSS process through that behavior solutions work. And there are some common themes across all of our buildings with their MTSS process, but it's also very individualized. Like I had a principal say, we've really done so much work in the universal tier, but the one thing I know we need to do, we need to have a better menu of tier-two options, or we do need to make better data-driven decisions. We need to have different data for those decisions. So there are some common themes, but it's also very much individualized by building. And that's a common theme that we are seeing across the district, continue to support our universal tier instruction, but starting to add more focus on our tier-two interventions through behavior academies, which is the behavior solutions kind of solution. Behavior academies are tier-two skill instruction and other interventions at the tier-two level.
Mimi, do you want to explain what tiers mean?
Sure. In the MTSS process, and I'm sure you've all seen this triangle before, the bottom tier is everybody. It's a universal tier instruction. And the best explanation I've ever heard is one of the principals talks about shaking a sifter, and then some people fall through, and you say, what we did at the universal tier was not enough. And typically, we want that to be 15, 20%. If the number, like Lisa said earlier, is 40% fall through, you have to say, we need to go back down to that bottom tier and reteach something, or strengthen something in the universal tier. That is a lot of work that we've done over the past few years. I think that is why many, many things could contribute to those behavior numbers going down, but it has been a lot of hard work in the universal tier. People were responding to the data, and they were saying, this is not just data for a few kids, this is data for a lot of kids. We need to respond in a universal tier way. So that was a lot of our SEL instruction, a lot of different decisions people made with staffing, a lot of different things happened to strengthen that universal tier. So then tier two, when they shake that sifter and some kids fall through, that's a targeted intervention that would be provided. And if we shake that sifter again and you fall through, you would be in the tier three, and that'd be a very intensive, personalized, kind of individualized intervention.
And some of what we've already shared about our attendance practices, we are going to send new guidance out to all of our families. We are working to implement coding changes in our infinite campus for state reporting that matches those changes that have come down from the state. And then we are going to continue with our practices, and then December 5th, we will have our multicultural family night as well.
And as far as next steps with the cellphone task force, we have five meetings scheduled between December of this, of this calendar year, and then through April 25th of this, of next calendar year. And it's sort of done strategically, because we want this to overlap, to see what, to see if there's any movement in Des Moines through the legislative process as well, too, because we don't want to get too far out in front of this and all of a sudden find out what Des Moines might issue to us. We've seen that happen to us time and time again, so we want to have that be in alignment. So Mark and I strategically came up with, let's try to track this along with the legislative session as well, too. Our work is going to continue to move forward, recommendations to explore and consider strategies to minimize the impact of cellphones on student concentration, academic performance, and we want to engage with our students. And I sort of hearken, if you can hearken back to this earlier, I said, we want to engage with students, teachers, and other stakeholders to gather diverse insights and ensure well-rounded solutions, because obviously, we can hear one side of that conversation, but we want to hear all parts of that conversation as well, too. And then lastly, I want to give a shout out to Mike Siz and Becky and Mimi as well, because we are fortunate that we're going to have an award-winning journalist and bestselling author, Catherine Price, who will be the featured speaker in our district's Family and Community Engagement Series, to talk about this very topic. And so district leaders will have a dedicated session to meet with, with Catherine Price on this topic and their impacts of, on our work prior to her public lecture on November 13th. And we would also like to extend that courtesy for you all to join us as well when the district leadership, or when the district leaders talk and have that one-on-one session with her.
That's great. I'm going.
Yeah, one more question. Ms. Becky, did you say December 5th is that event?
Yes.
I'm, this is just, just an idea. I would be curious if we still have our BSU students, our Marshall Lee Student Group on, on campus, still at both of our high schools? And if so, how could we partner with them to host this, or partner with you to get more families there? You don't have to answer that, but there's something to think about, working with students to get more students and families there.
And we are, we are working with students. They're going to do our opening and closing ceremonies for that night event. So we are working with all groups of students to be a part of that, and encouraging their families to come to that. So yes, thank you. And we, we want that to be a family engagement night for everybody, so.
Looking forward to that one.
Yes, please attend that as well.
I would just add a, an addition to Colby's plug for Catherine Price being with us. We're really excited about it, and Mimi and Becky and Amy and I had a chance to visit with Catherine on a pre-call about our event, and we've really been intentional about developing some time for our building leaders, the folks on the task force that we talked about, to really spend some time pre-lecture to dig into the topic. Catherine, we found out on the call with her, is actually working directly with John Haidt's research team with Anxious Generation, and is authoring the Anxious Generation for Kids. So she is really a leading expert on this topic, and in our conversation with her, I think we all left really excited, because I think she she also brings a philosophy of our goal of this entire event is to bring the community into the conversation and really begin that, and to look at practical takeaways that people can, can, can bring from it. And so I think we're really excited about that. We're thankful for the generous support of the DRA in making something like this happen. But we're really excited that it's going to be a really outstanding event, and we really feel like it's a great way to, to have the community engage in that conversation and the topic that crosses so many barriers and boundaries and really impacts adults, students alike. So it should be a really great event.
To be clear, the date of this event we're discussing is Wednesday, November 13th, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, at 6:30 PM at Senior High School.
I thought December 5th was... Somebody said December 5th.
Yeah, what's December 5th?
That's the multicultural.
That's a multicultural family event, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Two different events.
Okay.
Both very exciting.
And we'll get you the time and email of that event prior to the lecture. It's going to be 4:15, right, Mike? 4:15 to 5:15? Then we'll have a short break for a dinner that will be there that we can all enjoy together, something kind of informal sponsored by the DRA, and then we'll go into the lecture.
And that's the November 13th?
Correct.
Got it on my calendar.
Yep.
We're weaving too many emails.
Yeah.
So tonight, when we started with our priority initiatives, you know, we, we brought five total priority initiatives to the board. We really chose that we focused a lot on one, two, and three tonight. However, we're still going to talk about four and five, but a lot of that work is coming up in the next few months. So we'll probably focus more on these two priorities in the February update, just so you know that. But Priority Four really talks about our district facilities and to make sure they're modern, efficient, and that the environment is what's expected by our students and families today. And we believe that if we're intentional about our facility planning, that'll enhance our learning and also have our long-term financial viability into the future. So the priorities under number four, obviously, well, the main priority is to update the district's 10-year capital facility plan with a focus on the student experience and financial efficiencies. So what we're looking at under 4.0, at 4.1, is to reassess our facility plans and make sure that they're in alignment with what our enrollment needs are saying. And then 4.2 is, how do we engage community stakeholders in those, in that planning process so that we can get input from all of our community groups? Okay? And so the key actions really is internally, we are talking, especially as a cabinet, as we're looking at our certified enrollment numbers and looking at school numbers over the past five years, and really trying to see where can we find efficiencies within our current layout. And so the district is going to engage with Envisions, who was the architect firm that helped us through the first bond referendum. So we have our first meeting with them next week. And then we hope to really dive into, you know, what does the data look like? What does our enrollment information look like? And where are we at financially so that we can make a decision about what the future holds? Is it to go to a bond referendum? Is it to have the same number of schools this year or next year as we do this year? And so we can start working on that process, not only internally, but then with the board and with the community as well. Okay? And then as far as engaging community stakeholders, that really is to gather feedback, and that'll occur because when we engage with Envisions like we did before, they had many community engagement sessions that we were able to engage people in face-to-face, and then also send out some surveys to really engage people on what they would be looking for with our facility, what facility needs are they looking at, us wanting to look at moving forward. Okay? And then our next steps are, we're hoping that in our board member, board meetings in early, it sounds crazy to say 2025, we will begin to have those conversations and talk about those potential facility plans as we move forward to the end of 25, yeah, 25 and into the fall of 2025. And then lastly, how will we engage community stakeholders? And it's really to parallel those conversations with the conversation we're having at the board table so that we can get community input and then come back and make good, you know, and make those decisions as a board as well. So that we're hearing the community alongside as we're making those decisions. Okay? And Priority Number Five, this is our, our last one of, of the evening, and really this is about, how do we maintain our reputation as employer of choice? Because we know that we're the second-largest employer in the city of Dubuque, and so we want to continue being the employer of choice. And then we believe that if we have highly qualified compassionate staff, that we're going to have better student outcomes. Because again, that's about culture, people wanting to be here, and people that want to build relationships with our kiddos. So Priority Five says, enhance the overhaul, staff recruitment, and retention systems in the district. So 5.1 is about expanding staff recruitment and onboarding. 5.2 is about developing a leadership development pipeline, because as we know, as people hit a certain age point, we have to make sure that we've got people that want to have those leadership roles and are ready to fill those roles when needed. And then 5.3 is about broadening the staff recognition efforts to highlight our staff in a way that again builds that culture. And so Brian Cool was not able to be here this evening, so Mike has decided to fill in and to talk to you all about Priority Number Five.
Maybe voluntold. No. No, I'm happy to pinch-hit for Brian tonight because there is some crossover in the work that's happening. And so really, the key actions in this area, as Amy mentioned, we have a new updated onboarding process that's underway and we continue to build upon. And what we've really established is consistency in that, that when new employees come, Laura Kunkel in particular, in the HR office, who is new to her role in the office, has really helped us streamline that process and come up with a consistent experience for new employees as they onboard into the district. And we continue to look at ways to enhance that and do kind of both parts of the procedural things that have to happen, and then also the culture-building piece that has to happen as, as our employees join us. The spring is really the employee recruitment season, and so as Amy said, when we look at the timing of these priorities, the work that's happening now is in the background to prepare for recruiting season, to prepare new collateral materials, to again, represent the, the employee culture that we have in the district, and then planning for attendance at career events, and really looking at being strategic about what happens during that employee recruitment season, which we know really happens in the spring. We, of course, always have ongoing efforts for, in particular, some of our non-teaching staff, but we know that when it comes to especially the educational side, that really happens in the spring. In terms of developing a leadership pipeline, we've talked a lot in the district about grow your own leaders and how do we continue to look at our staff members in the district who exhibit those exceptional skills for leadership and have the potential to move into future roles? And so work has started in the district to identify those emerging leaders in a more intentional way, and then engage them in conversation about those leadership abilities, about what the future might look like for them, about kind of tapping them on the shoulder and looking for ways that we can enrich their experience and their leadership opportunities to help prepare them to move into, to future leadership roles. And then looking at staff recognition to say, we know that when we can, you know, we talk a lot about having a, a high achieving staff culture. How do we continue to recognize that? And in what ways can we look at broadening that staff recognition? And so we continue to look at, one, how we do that in our district, but then also, how do other districts do it? And looking more broadly across the HR sector to say, what are employee recognition programs looking like? What are those best practices? And how can we utilize those best practices to be more intentional about how we recognize our staff? And we have a number of things that are in place currently, but we know that we can do more in that regard. And so that takes us right into the next step piece. One of the exciting things that's going to happen this year is in January, we're going to host our own career fair, which is the first time we've done that. We're going to do that here at the forum, and we're going to open that up for prospective employees to come right here and learn about all of the opportunities that we have available. So we'll be promoting that. We'll look at how to do outreach around that. But we go to a lot of other career fairs, but as Amy said, we're the second-largest employer, so let's look at ways we can bring people right to us and have that whole host of opportunities available for prospective employees. Developing that leadership pipeline, that we're going to be creating some opportunities to bring those emerging leaders together, and then also give them the opportunity to connect with our local and regional colleges to talk about, especially on the educational side, when there are advanced credentials needed. What does that look like? What does it look like to get into an administrative program? And what does that process look like? And how can we have some conversation about that? And then, you know, we think about kind of college fairs for, for undergrad students, but let's think about those opportunities for our professional staff to say, what are those opportunities for, for graduate work, administrative degrees for that licenser that's required, so that we can start to have those conversations about what that could look like? And then in terms of the staff recognition piece, one of the things we want to do is bring staff members from all areas of the district together and kind of form a representative group to just have some conversations. We can say what we think is great to recognize staff, but how can we hear from our various work groups to say, where is it that they find value in recognition? And what are the ways that we can highlight that? So really looking at being collaborative in that conversation so that we can most effectively recognize our staff across all areas in all those various units in the district to, to look at those best practices. So that's kind of a recap in terms of the next steps in that regard. And again, the timing is such that a lot of that work happens as we move into spring. I hope Brian feels like I served that well.
We'll make him go back and watch it. So again, I just really thank everybody that was here tonight, that really caught everybody up on the great work that we're doing. I do have to say this out loud, because tonight is Kevin Keller's last ever strategic planning meeting. And so we let him off easy, that he didn't even have to talk tonight. But so Kevin, I think, I just want to know how you feel with this being your last one.
I can't wait to hear your strategic meetings in February and May, to see the continued growth and things that the district are doing to make us a better place.
So you're going to come?
Yeah. If I'm in town.
Oh.
Well, you know, we're, we're kind of starting Kevin's farewell tour, but Kevin knows that he's been a huge asset to this district, and lots of things that you've done for the district, both in planning and getting us ready for what's next. I just want to say thanks. And we'll be saying thanks to you like over and over again, but you know, we're actually going to miss him because, you know, he is a pretty nice guy, too. Kevin's just been a wonderful asset to our team and to the district, and we're going to miss him, miss him greatly. But I just had to shout out to him that this was his last one, so.
I do have a hard question for Kevin, too, because I knew he was leaving. You know, I think a few days ago, there was a great article by the TH done about the school vouchers, you know? And I'm curious, just throughout the state, there was a narrative about this resource was supposed to support targeted communities, right? Low income, those who just want to find a different path. Has there been any data collected to actually see who's benefiting from that throughout the state?
Well, there, since you've asked that question, there was a story in ASBO International about that. And what the story says is there's not been a significant change in the movement from non-public to private. It's only been like a 2% or 3% change since all of these states have done that. So they haven't seen a significant rollover of students. So what's happening is now states are funding two different systems instead of one. So we'll see as the years progress how that affects our economy.
It's interesting, because when I look at locally, it's those who have, have more now. Who would have thought that? History continues to repeat itself. So I would just, be interesting if locally we can find some data and do a story, you know, because if we're not investing in public education, just imagine the employers of the, of tomorrow, are they going to come to Dubuque? Right? Because they're going to look at the education system to say, is there a good education system to feed our future workforce? And, and I can get political, so I won't on that one. And then to Mike, I love this idea of having a space for people to come in and consider all the different jobs and opportunities. I would be curious down the road if there's an opportunity to also source locally, so if we can buy toilet paper from a local company, could that also be an opportunity to invite small businesses in to look at the opportunities to build that procurement?
Kevin, have you seen any, any research, going back to the vouchers, in terms of states with a voucher system akin to ours, that how it has affected funding to public education going forward from the point of implementation?
I think it's too new, too early in that process for states to really have that data, because it's just traded, started recently in the last year or two. But that privatization, paying for that privatization piece as part of state funding has taken place. So I think you will see that down the road in two or three years, how that's affected states financially.
Makes sense.
And I would like to add one piece to what we were talking about earlier, about, you know, how we're building our leaders internally. I think this is a perfect example.
Aww. Grow your own, right?
My big takeaway from this priority initiatives is, school is to educate students, but now we're really, we're not only still doing that and continue to do it better, but now we're educating our employees to make them better at their jobs. And I love that that, this is full of that. That's going to make us a destination place. We're spending so much time and energy on our students and now our employees. So thank you.
And again, I just wanted to thank Mike and Tricia for putting the format together. I hope, you know, we'll get some feedback to what you thought of the new format, but hopefully you can see that we are really diving deep into the work and we're using our team to collaborate around that work, which is really important. So I appreciate everybody coming tonight, everybody that was on TV. Elizabeth, thanks for being here. And again, thanks to the board for all that you do for us.
We got one more, because we know you avoid this, but thank you, you know, because you, you create this environment, you take all of our ideas, you go back to the team, and you bring something beautiful like this. So I think all of us want to say thank you for your leadership, your guidance. The boat is rowing in the right direction despite what's going outside of our control. So thank you for your leadership.
Absolutely. Yeah, I was, just echo what everyone said. I mean, and we've been staying laser-focused on making sure our stu, all of our students succeed. Also love hearing the ways that we're making sure our teachers and staff have what they need to make that happen, and that you've many times said it's, you know, best practices, research-based, like we're doing, doing the top-quality stuff that we can do in this district. And we've always been doing that the whole time I've been on this board. So thank you all for that. Any other items? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned.